Okay, ladies and gents, we can make a start. Just slightly late for making the arrangements. Good evening, everyone. Today's meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to all of you in attendance. My name's councillor Alan Hooper. I'm councillor for West Echolsfield and also Chair of this North Local Area Committee. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I will hand over to the committee clerk, Philippa, to read out the housekeeping arrangements. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please, can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point will be in the car park on this side of the building. The toilets are situated on this side of the room. The men's toilets, please be careful because there's a step up and then a step down, I believe. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we do have hearing loops available. If you would like to use one, please let us know. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Phil. Can I ask that members and officers around the table introduce themselves, please? We'll start with you, councillor Bowden, please.
Your councillor, Richard Williams, for Stanington.
Councillor Penny Baker, for Stanington.
Jason Sedall, I'm the head of communities at Sheffield City Council.
Hi there, my name's Dave Lockhart, I'm the community services manager for the North.
Councillor Mike Leavey, for West Echolsfield.
Councillor Anne Whitaker, for West Echolsfield.
Euston Echolsfield.
Councillor Lewis Chin Chen, Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Thank you, everyone. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to explain how the meeting will work, just a brief explanation before we go into it. We will deal with the formal business of apologies to declarations and minutes of the last meeting first, then we will take public questions. We will then move on to the important item of the local community plan. The area manager will firstly give a presentation. There will be a discussion/debate by members of the committee and asked to agree the plan, subject to any amendments. Once the plan is agreed, we would like then to move into more positive arrangement activity, which we'd like to give you all involved with. We would like to have some breakout groups to consider how we implement the plan. These will last about 30 minutes. We will then gather back together and receive summary feedback from the groups. This will then be followed by an item on the transition to committees programmes. We have Julian Douglas here tonight, the Director of Legal and Governance, to give that presentation. Firstly, we have a report for noting of the decisions taken by the Community Services Manager. So if we could move on to agenda item number two, which is apologies for absence. I believe we have two apologies, councillor Vicky Priestley and councillor Francine Johnson. Councillor Julie Grochard is attending tonight, but she will be a little late. If we can move on to exclusion of the present public. I believe there are no items that require the exclusion of the present public at this meeting. Declarations of interest. Have any members any interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? Is that a no? Thank you. If we could now move on to minutes of the previous meeting. These are the minutes of the meeting of the 30th of September 2021. This is the first meeting, formal meeting, we've had where we can actually look at these minutes and agree them, hopefully. So it's minutes of the meeting held on the 30th of September at the venue Stockbridge. If we can go through them page by page for accuracy and then matters arising, so page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13 and page 14 and page 15. Are there any matters arising from members from these minutes? I've just got one, and it's in relation to a public question which was raised regarding Jeffcott Road in High Green. It was from a resident in High Green, and he asked us to look at two items on Jeffcott Road. One was traffic issues, which we're looking at by survey. The survey is currently out, and we're waiting for feedback on that. Survey has been undertaken by the parish council. And secondly, the question regarded a gate/barrier leading out of Mortimer Park onto Jeffcott Road, straight onto the road. That has been commissioned and we're awaiting fitting of that. It's going to be a gate onto Jeffcott Road. Is there any further issues or items from the minutes, please? Thank you. Could we have item number seven? Sorry, we're doing... Sorry, item number six, which is approval of the community plan. Dave Lockhart, manager, is going to give a presentation, and then we'll look at Oakley Green, the plan, and then break it out. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to take you through a summary of the proposed community plan for the North. Those of you that are here in the room with us will have a full copy of the plan within your pack. Anyone who's following us through the webcast will be able to access that on the website. And I just want to take you through really the process that we've been through in order to develop a draft plan and then to set out the proposed priorities and the next step within that. Thank you. Okay, so if we can move to the next slide, please? Thank you. So just to set a little bit of context, Sheffield has seven local area committees. Those area committees cover the whole city, and those area committees are made up of elected representatives for the area. So the North Local Area Committee, this meeting tonight, covers the four wards of East Echolsfield, Stanington, Stockbridge and Upper Don, and West Echolsfield. And so the elected councillors from those wards make up the local area committee. The purpose behind the local area committee is to engage, empower and enable communities. So the idea is that this is a space where we can discuss issues in the area, where we can hear people's views, and where there are greater opportunities for people to talk about what's happening in their community, to get involved in the decisions that the councillors are making and what goes on within their area. Thank you. So in terms of some backgrounds to how we've developed the plan, we carried out a consultation in September and October of last year, and we did that in a range of different ways. So we had an online survey that was active across the city. We know that a lot of people choose to do things online, it's very convenient for them, and we had about 650 people who chose to fill in the survey and to give us their views. We are well aware that that is not an approach that works for everybody, and so we also had face-to-face engagement. Some of that was carried out by your area committee team with your councillors, and some of that was carried out by partner organisations on our behalf. So we had a mix of consultation approaches, and through that we spoke to 900 people to get a bit of a sense of what people's views were across the area. Thank you. And these were some of the headlines that we heard from people. People really enjoy the rural aspect of the North. In certain areas, they find things like the shops and the transport really positive. There's a really strong sense of community. But there are other areas where people might struggle more with the high streets and with the transport lengths, and where there are concerns about antisocial behaviour. They're obviously quite broad themes, but those were the four biggest categories that came out. Okay, thank you. What we then did was we looked at the statistical information that we have on the area. So I won't go through every box that you have here, but it tells us some interesting things. It tells us that the North has a higher proportion of older people than many parts of the city, that the North has much less ethnic diversity than other areas. Where we have that figure there of the number of people that live with deprivation, that's proportionately lower than the city as a whole, but at the same time, we know that there are certain areas of the city, and where we are tonight is one of them, where we know that there are some real issues of deprivation. Thank you. So in terms of looking at the characteristics of the area, there were several things that really stood out. One is that the North is an area that people really enjoy. They enjoy the countryside nature of it, and there is that really strong sense of community. Whilst we know there are those strengths, we know that there are challenges as well, and we know that there are pockets of deprivation, as I've said, which are sometimes missed because of the strengths of other parts of the area. And we know that there are challenges in the North, sometimes because of its rural nature. So sometimes people will struggle to access services just because of how big the area is and how far it is from the town centre. And so sometimes there are those challenges of infrastructure that people tell us about. That might be about things like the quality of the broadband, for example, which we hear from people. Thank you. So what we sought to do is to bring together the information that we've had through consultation and that statistical information, to think about some priorities that we believe as an area committee, as an area committee team, that we can start to make some progress on. And we've grouped those within these three areas of safe roads and effective transport links, clean and attractive environment, and vibrant community life. I think one thing that I'd say about these priorities is they're quite broad, and some of them overlap. So for example, some of the community safety issues that have been raised will fit into all of those, actually. There will be things sometimes about concerns about speeding, for example, within road safety, or fly tipping and graffiti within the environment, or in terms of community life, concerns about whether there are good things for young people to do, and about how we share information, for example, about the fact that we do now have local policing teams, which we didn't have for a number of years. So these are cross-cutting themes that we think identify areas where we can really get some work done. Thank you. So we're very conscious that what we want to do is identify over a period of time tangible areas where we think we can do work, that is going to make a real difference. And what we want to do is to work with real creativity and work particularly in partnership with community groups and with other people who deliver services, to make the biggest impact that we can. So we're aware with some of the things that people have spoken to us about within the consultation, some of these things are not overnight things. Some of these things are things that people have had concerns about for a long time, and it's going to take a fair bit of time, and it'll be a real challenge to do something about these areas. So we quite deliberately talked about having some goals for the area, not immediately just saying, "These are things that we will do", but "These are things that we want to work towards". And so I'm just going to talk about three areas where we've identified some goals, and within that we've identified some specific areas where particularly as the staff team, we want to explore further. And I'll explain then at the end what our plan is, to come back to you with something which will essentially be a lot more detailed in a few months' time. So an aspiration, a goal for the area, that it's a connected place where people can access what they need to play an active part in their community. So these are some areas where we think particularly as a staff team that we need to explore further. We want to have more happening for young residents in the area, and your councillors are very clear in our discussions that they want young people's voices to be at the heart of that. They don't want us just to be going away and working out what we think that young residents in the area need. We want to look at further at things like digital exclusion, where we know that there's a real barrier to people accessing services if they're not online. We want to think about things like how we share information about what is going on in the area, which is a challenge in a big area. How do we develop and promote volunteering? And how do we support those who are in greatest need in the area? So as a practical example, your councillors have regularly supported some of the food banks in the area through their ward pots. So that's one example of focusing the money that the area committee has on those in greatest need. Thank you. A second goal that we want to work towards in terms of the North being a safe place for people to live in and to travel around. We want to look at people's experience of local transport routes. We're very conscious that bus companies are private companies, but I think there are conversations within the city, and I think particularly through the sort of mayoral authority, you know, to revisit that. We want to think about whether there is scope to deal with some of the issues that the private companies won't deal with through community transport. Is that an option? Is that something that we could take further? Things there about road safety, such as 20 mile an hour zones, and we have a commitment that every ward within the North will have a vehicle activated sign which alerts people if their speeds are higher than they should be. And one of the things that we picked up in consultation around community safety was concerns sometime about how well younger people fit in within social housing areas, how well they're integrated, and whether that's something that we can make some progress on. Thank you. And then the final goal there is about the North being an attractive place with good facilities, and we know that often it's a real strength of the area, but there are concerns about some of our high streets. We want to continue to really actively support some of our community groups, a number of which are thinking about some of the buildings in the area and how they can be used for the community. How can we continue to improve the play facilities that we have in the open spaces? And what can we do around areas where we know that there's a sort of hotspot around graffiti, litter and flight tipping? So if we move on to the next slide. We're conscious that what we're talking about tonight is essentially at quite a headline level, we're saying we've done a lot of consultation, we've looked at information about the area, and we think these are areas that we want to prioritise and we want to explore further. One of the comments that I've had through our email inboxes, "Are you going to have specific targets and specific things that can be measured?". And we'd absolutely want to be in that place, and so I would expect that when we come back to you in another three months or so time, having explored some of these areas in more detail, we'll be able to start to talk to you about some specific projects. We'll begin to then be able to put together an action plan to say specifically, "This is what we expect to do". But really, we've been in that, I guess in reality, that research phase of trying to understand the needs of the area, so that we can identify those priorities that we can then drill down further into. So Chair, maybe that people have some questions on the presentation, or otherwise we can move towards discussion, the formal recommendation.
Thanks very much, Dave. Thank you very much. Yeah, are there any questions from members of the public regarding the plan in itself and the presentation? Yeah? Excuse me, could you just come in, use the mic here, just up here?
Yeah, hi, Dave. I was just going to ask, is it more around signing off the headlines rather than a plan because the plan's yet to emerge? And the other comment I was going to say is, you said there'd been some extensive consultation, but the numbers were really low in terms of the population, so I wonder if you could boost it a bit because you've got all the councillors around the table that have lots of engagements and regular interaction with people, so that anecdotal feedback in terms of what their residents are telling them, you know, and whether it could be a bit more creative if people are not getting involved, so like social media monitoring, people putting there what they're interested in.
I think one of the issues about the consultation and the limitations of it was that it was undertaken during Covid, when we couldn't actually meet and get out and interview people. We did have a couple of community groups that looked at it, and certainly in Stockbridge, we were very pleased with the replies that we got from Stockbridge. We're really aware of the lack of consultation with young people. That was very low, but we are aware, and it is an emerging plan. This is the outline, and it will emerge as we go along. Do you want to add anything, Dave?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think it's helpful language to go about it's being an emerging plan, and probably a plan that will continue to develop over time. Certainly when I've been involved in plans in the past, we've said, "There's the plan, it's the plan for two years, we've got lots of copies printed off, that sort of it". And I don't think that's how we're approaching these plans. I think that they are something that we would expect to grow and develop over time. In terms of the consultation, we've got a baseline of over 1%, and I think most people would feel that that is enough to give you a sort of reliable feel of an area. We don't want that just to be a one-off. So I think your point about the councillors is the councillors have been a key part of this process, partly through coming out and doing some of that consultation, partly through the regular meetings that we as officers have with them, so that kind of gave that sense check as well, that we've got the information from the people that we've spoken to, we've got the statistical information, and then we've got the vast knowledge of the councillors in terms of their involvement in the community. I think we wouldn't necessarily expect to do a big consultation every year, but neither would we say we're shutting the door and that's it, this is the plan for two years. So I think we would expect that when we consult again, we'll want to do that more broadly, more creatively, I think. Not having Covid will help. I think we're very keen to develop conversations with young people. So I think it is very much an evolving thing, but this essentially is giving us a baseline to say, "These are the things that we expect to be pursuing effectively, and we would expect to come back to you certainly at the next meeting with a lot more detail".
Thank you. Is Will Nash in the room? Is he attended? Well? Now, we received a communication from him, not so much a question, but he was asking, "Why is community safety and crime not one of the three area priorities, when it was the least liked and third highest for improvements in the area overall?". We have replied to him, Dave's replied to him, but it is built in, the crime and the community safety is built in to a vibrant community life, and we'll be looking at that, and a clear and attractive environment. We do work closely with the police, and I think our relationship with the police currently is the best we've ever had with the neighbourhood police. So they're involved with it, and we're involved with them. Is there anything else? Sorry, do you want to come to the mic, please? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, sir. Yeah, sure. Sorry to maybe pour cold water on this excellent, well, this lengthy piece of work, but, you know, we've been talking for a long time about the plans. I think we're at the stage where we're looking for action, and I'm not sure we get at it. I mean, are there any examples of any shovel-ready projects in this part of Sheffield that are going to improve the quality of life for people? This report talks about working with the deprived. Well, that's an obvious one. Looking after the needs of young people, an obvious one, but don't forget the rest of the old people like me, for example. This stuff about levelling up as well, I mean, our last MP did very little, in my opinion, for the area. We now have still quite a new MP. I've not heard her doing anything. Is she involved, just in the levelling up stuff, to sort to improve the quality of life for North Sheffield? And the other point, we do live in this city, we're part of the city council family, we're council taxpayers, the bill is going up again this next month with all the other increased bills that we're facing. Are we getting, I would be expecting you guys and ladies to ensure we're getting value for money from the council tax that we pay. Are we going to get a fair share of whatever's around in Sheffield in the North compared to the people in the more affluent areas? And to call this place an attractive place, village environment, no, certainly not everywhere. You can't call this area attractive, I'm afraid. Would you respect people who live here? Not an attractive place. Let's get real, we're deprived, you know, and we need extra funding, and we're going to get it with the help of our MP. So let's not keep talking, please, we've done that for many a year. This is a nice report, but it's very general. We need some specific, are there any projects that are going to happen in the next 12 months that are going to improve the quality of life for those people? Thank you. Respond for a start? Yeah, do you want to come up front, Julie? Into here, please. Thank you. I was going to mention Stockbridge, Julie, as a start, and then to...
Apologies, I was late. I was unfortunately stuck on another meeting, and it took me a little while to get here, so I do apologise for that. I think you're absolutely right. I think that we do need to start putting some meat on the bones and showing people what we're actually doing. I come with the Stockbridge and Upper Don ward, I live in Stockbridge, and the thing that you've just said is something that I hear regularly when I'm, you know, going about living my life and doing what I do. So I think it's important that we do listen and we do take some action in relation to that. We're very fortunate, a long time ago, with the lady sat next to you, I think it was back in 2014, we put in for a future high street bid and for Stockbridge. We were unsuccessful, but ultimately that's led to us getting the town's fund bid. So in terms of our particular ward, we have got a tangible difference that is coming to fruition now, and will impact massively on the quality of life, because it's not just about improving the high street, but it's about improving the parks, the leisure facilities, health and wellbeing. So there is quite a lot of work going on there, and I don't underestimate for a moment how fortunate we are. So that's just one area of the city, that there's lots of investment going on in local parks and countryside in terms of trying to make parks better. I think that's a lesson we've certainly all learned from Covid and the pandemic, in terms of how much we do value our outdoor space. And I think probably, and, you know, this is just my interpretation of it, I think the comment that you made about, you know, people saying this was a nice place to live, I think probably that's because we are surrounded by lots of beautiful countryside, and over the last two years, we've all gone out and enjoyed that because of the pandemic. It's made us go out and get into the countryside more that is surrounding us. But certainly, there is a lot to do. As a local area committee, we have got funding to deal with flight tipping and graffiti and nuisance, because we appreciate that, you know, when you step out of your door, if you're seeing down the street, you know, fly tipping and dog fowling and stuff, it does make you feel pretty depressed. We all know that, we all understand that. So we have got a pot of money put aside to deal with that. There's lots of work ongoing where we are looking at the hotspots, that we've got the places where it happens the most, so that we can start by dealing with the worst areas and work our way through, because we think if we can start making our environments look better, can start making people take pride in them. It's not something we can just do as councillors, we need to do that as a collective. And I know we all have local litter picking groups that we get involved and engaged with, so that we can all work together to do those things that really we shouldn't do, because if we took our pride in our own areas, then we wouldn't be dropping litter. But fortunately, we've got enough people about in our community and across the ward who do care enough and who are interested enough to make sure that they will go and do those sorts of things. So there's lots of things that are going on, and I think perhaps what we need to make sure we do for all of you, so that you understand that, is work out a better way of communicating what is going on, so that you can actually see that. And as per... And I suppose the problem for us as local councillors is sometimes we just get on and do it and perhaps we need to start just making a little bit more about, aware about what is going on. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Chair, I really would like to add to what Julie said. As I said, now we have funding that is directed locally, it's a lot easier for us to support group, community groups. Stannington is a huge ward, it goes from Mayling Bridge to Strines, from Worrall over, back down to where, Rivlin. It's a massive area and we have struggled for financial support in the past, but at least we have now some now. We are also working to support local people and their local parks. In some areas, we already have community groups, they're doing their bit and it's relatively easy then because you can support them to get them the help, the advice and the funding they need to do the job they want to do within their area. It's, you know, we have Rivlin Valley, part of Rivlin Valley in our ward and we have contributed some of the money which left over from section 106 towards a plan that will improve that area and bring it up to this level that we'd like it to be. We're working with people in different parts like Stannington, Rosy Park Village, one of Worrall's parks, Worrall has two parks, to try and improve what is there. And we're trying very hard to have equipment there that's suitable for disabled children because in the, you know, historically we haven't in Sheffield. So, we're trying very hard to do that. We're trying, as has already been said, one of the major lights in our sort of area has been fly tipping. We've worked really hard with community and the council to improve that, there'll be cameras going up in hotspots. We've also between, actually Stockbridge and Stannington purchased a speed camera because one of the problems we've got in our areas, as soon as somebody sees an open straight road, they go for it. And, you know, the fact that there's a dark one going on and there's a stable at the end and a kid's coming out on a horse or something like that, been very dangerous. So, we're working again with community groups so that, and individuals in the community who've expressed an interest to get the speed cameras out there so we can bring that on board. There's a lot of other things. I suppose what we're talking about today is the framework of which the LAC will work, the framework of which is there in place to put the resources where they are needed and how we will prioritise that by listening to local people. So, I think a lot of us could go on for a long time, but I take your point, what we've just heard is quite dry facts and actually I've sat here thinking and we've just mentioned to each other, it's not very inspiring, we perhaps need to talk about events and people. You know, one of the things we've done with a little bit of silver money we've done is we've had gates erected around a community space where young people play football to stop the four before us going up there and churning them up and destroying their pictures. So, there's a lot of work we're doing out there and we have more support now through the LACs than we have since we lost our community assemblies. So, I think we're getting there, I take your point, it's quite dry, but we have to do the basics so we can get the rest of the stuff right. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Penny. Yeah, I'll add as well, in the north we're fortunate that we have a town council and two parish councils which adds to the benefits of the north area. The north's a massive area with its assets of wonderful countryside, wonderful woodland and open spaces, but we also have issues with it being sort of semi-rural with broadband, fibre, rural isolation, transport, transport because of the distances, another thing. One of the things that I'm passionate about is young people, provision for young people. In the north, we've virtually nothing at the moment provided for young people except through the voluntary services and there is a scheme and money being put forward by the council and we all have a share in each of our wards to, for some provision for young people and to me that's a necessity. And it meets in with lots of things that we're looking at up there. Does anyone else want to add about other issues? I've certainly had about Ecclesfield and the Ecclesfield Park and the development that's going on down there. And we're fortunate in High Green, you say High Green's a place, but High Green's a good place. They have got two very severe pockets of deprivation, but we have wonderful facilities over at Thorncliff, the leisure centre, health centre there and St George's Park Football. We've even got people coming from outside Sheffield to St George's because of the nature of the first-class facility. Do you want to add Dave, just add to what we said? Yeah, use the mic please, yeah.
Hello, pleasure to be here. My name's Dave Ogilvy, I'm a local parish councillor for one of the, for High Green. Great plan, so well, the bare bones of it so far, yeah, I think you've hit the nail on the head on a few areas. I'm worried that you're not going to use the facilities of the parish and town councils, particularly I'm talking about Eckersfield Parish to its fullest extent. I'm worried that you might try and go over the same ground that the parish council have gone over, things like youth projects, High Green, sorry, youth projects. The parish council, particularly me, are involved in creating a boxing club, which is, the plans for that have been drawn up at the moment and we've got the ground to build it on. LAC could get involved in that right now at the ground level, especially with helping direct towards funding. I know, the ex, I'm not talking about you giving us money, I'm talking about you finding people who could give us money to build this, to build this building. We've got the clubhouse for the Thorncliff Bowling and Tennis Club that's going through planning permission at the moment, which is a great project that will help increase members and decrease social isolation, especially for the 50-plus crowd, but not exclusively to them. And as for the youth crime, Eckersfield Parish Council as of May this year will have allocated £20,000 to preventing antisocial behaviour. I'm submitting a project, been working hard on one, to get youth involved in volunteering and again, LAC could get involved in that at the ground level. Certainly in terms of helping signpost towards funding, there's a lot of experts who in this room with a lot of experience that could help with that. And yeah, I'll leave it at that, but remember you've got, the parish councils as we, as our parish councillors know, are great assets and we're lucky to have them in the north of Sheffield, the rest of Sheffield don't have them. Thanks very much Chair.
Thanks Dave, yeah. Yeah, we do and we will work with the town and parish councils, we have had meetings with the chairs and the clerks and we will continue to do so. We don't want to work against, we want to work with, produce a better product at the end. We've got the work together, that's essential. Julie?
I think just to add to that, I think it's a really important point because town and parish councils are a really valuable asset and a number of us as city councils are also on town and parish councils. And I think it's really important that we work on a strategy as to how we work together and complement each other and do things together. I think that's really important, so I'm pleased that you've raised that, thank you.
Thank you. If we could move on councillors to any discussions you've got or any comments on the plan before we hopefully agree it? Any comments? No? I'd like at this stage to thank, sorry, sorry Alan.
Yeah, I think I'd just like to thank Dave for all the hard work that he's done in putting this together. I think, you know, we forget about, we're councillors and we forget about the officers there, I mean, the amount of work that he's had to put in, it's got to be tremendous. So, on behalf of the councillors, thank you.
Yeah, I would second that Alan, thank you very much. So, if we can move to agree the plan, it's where it is at the moment, it's not the final plan, but we could need to move forward, agree it and then we can start hopefully to develop projects as soon as possible. Some will be easy and some will be very difficult and lengthy, but if we can get some, what I would call quick wins, get something on the table where communities can see that we are making a difference. So, if we could agree the plan, if we could show hands please that we agree. Thank you very much.
Okay, what we'd like you to do now is, we'd like to have a bit of time over at the back of the room where some of the areas that you've heard us talk about, we'd love to hear what you think about those areas. So, we'd like you to take some time to walk around those areas to give us your thoughts, you can stick them down on a post-it note and stick it on, you can see what other people are saying very practically, well, within those areas of environment, children, young people, community facilities and whatever the other one is that I can't remember that you'll see at the back. We'd love to know what you think the issues are, that's really important. What we'd really love to know is what you think would make a difference, what are your ideas and what would make a difference in those areas? Because this is built, everything we're trying to do is built on working with the community and developing partnerships, so that's why it's so key to hear your voices. So, I'd like to suggest Chair, if we give people till 7.15 and I'd just really like to invite people to move around those areas, give us your thoughts, write something down, pop it on the sheet. Everything that you, that you tell us and that you write down tonight, we'll take away, we'll write up and it helps us with the next stage which is saying within those things, within the priorities, what are the practical steps we can take, very much taking the point on board of what are we going to see happen? So, we'd really like your input on that. So, if people are happy to do that, we'd love it if you could mill around at the back and there will be an officer in each of those areas to kind of man each station as it were, but we'd love to hear your thoughts. So, we'd like to do that till 7.15 now and then we will gather again and we've got a couple more formal items that we'd like to work through. Thank you. They write it up and that will inform what we do next. So, rather than going through that now, just be assured that we will be taking all that away and using that information. Thank you.
Can members inform me if any member of Enway that have been petitioned?
First, yes, the Motley Cloes was brought up at, it was a consultation meeting that occurred at the end of January. I did give a, actually I'm unadopted, surface water flooding. Sheffield City Council is aware of these problems and I would like to know, that's Alan Bilton, A, their views as to the cause of these problems, B, why nothing has been done to alleviate the problems, C, why despite meeting and visits from various council officials, the council has not communicated with residents 15 years. So, and then we will provide him hopefully with some clarity on the position of this. Thank you. Are there any more public questions from anybody in the meeting? Thank you very much.
Does the local committee have workers working for them in the town hall exclusively?
That look after us. So, if we got an issue or a project, we would take it.